Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given to the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas. In accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, we'll convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, March the first, 2011, at 5:30 PM and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session, Item A, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding properties struck off from and private bids to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale held on November 2nd, 2010. An Executive Session, Item B, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with a lawsuit styled and numbered Brownsville Firefighters Association versus City of Brownsville, Texas, cause number 2009-12-6632-I, and matters related to this litigation.
May I move that we called an executive sessions?
Okay.
There are motions, second on the favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries will be back by six.
Okay.
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 Is there any?
No.
No, what I was doing just now.
Okay.
No, what I was doing just now.
Okay.
No, what I was doing just now.
Okay.
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 ...Eat Well Brownsville a few weeks ago, so if you tune into Channel 12, you will find Tabitha Juarez, the dietitian at Su Clinica Familiar, talking about how to prepare food in a healthy way. She talked about the sugar content of many of the common foods that we eat. And as well, there was a guest chef that talked about baked fried chicken. Very interesting segment and one of many to come. And lastly, to remind everyone that the Zumba event is still ongoing or going to happen on April the 30th where Brownsville will attempt to break the world's record for the largest number of people to Zumba in one place at one time. Curiously enough, Glasgow, Scotland will be attempting to break the same record on the same day that we will, but because of time change, we will know whether or not, what number they reached before we start ours. So, please come out to the Brownsville Sports Park, April the 30th. If you get a last minute phone call, it's because we found out Glasgow is, has a large number and we need you to come down right away so that we can beat them. We certainly have to beat the Scottish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mario.
I'll pass on my report.
Thank you. Okay, proclamation, so Jaime Jorkes Zapata.
Mayor, that's gonna be for a later date.
Yeah, that's for a later date. Let me pass that out.
Motion here. Do we have a motion to table it?
Move the table.
Move the table.
Move the table, second. Move the favor.
Aye.
Right.
All opposed, motion carries.
Four. I think, does anybody want? No, I got two.
Yeah, I got three.
Okay.
I got the two, everybody got three?
Got three.
Okay, Confederate Air Force. Is this the one I asked for?
Yes, this is the one that you had mentioned previously before.
This is gonna be presented at the airshow, right?
That's correct. And the friends at the airport tent. In summary, what this does is recognize the history and the significance of the, a number of different firsts that have taken place at the Brownsville South Padre and International Airport. But the focus is the fact, and the focus of the activities will be centered this year on the annual airshow, which should be unique this year because it's a three-day airshow into the two days. It's March 11th, 12th, and 13th. March 11th, the airshow will start about 3:00 in the afternoon and will be a nighttime airshow, that's a Friday. There will also be an airshow on Saturday as well as on Sunday. They'll be flying all three days. The Friday evening airshow will have air acrobatic acts that actually take place after dark, which is truly a unique thing to see in terms of planes being lit up and so on and so forth. And it's truly something unique. The airshow appears as though it will be a particularly good airshow, assuming the weather holds true like it did last year. So, we would invite everyone, encourage the city commissioner to invite everyone to come out and actually see how planes fly, bring their kids out, so they have an opportunity to go up and touch an airplane, to see how airplanes fly, the various different things they can do and so forth, and gain an appreciation of aviation. We would recommend approval.
Okay, March 11th, what time does it start?
3:00.
3:00.
Right. That's at the airport, it's on, it's on the 1735 runway. The key thing is to go to the commemorative Air Force Headquarters, which is along Minnesota, south of Billy Mitchell in Minnesota, and be going there. And I think people will find it a very interesting time.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.
Can you read the proclamation?
Sir?
Is there a proclamation?
Yes, we have a proclamation. Did you want it read today, or?
Well, you wanna read it for the record?
If you'd like. "A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing the commemorative Air Force on its 20th local airshow. Whereas the mission of the commemorative Air Force is the preservation, protection, and display of antique flying machines dating primarily from the World War II era. And whereas, in its almost 30 years of existence before moving to Brownsville, the CAF hosted 29 airshows, which drew flying demonstrations, acts, aircraft, and performances by state-of-the-art military planes, along with a carnival-like atmosphere, all of which were enormously popular with the public and which drew large crowds. And whereas, in 1991, coincidental to its move to the Brownsville South Padre Allen International Airport, the Rio Grande Valley Wing of the CAF hosted its first local airshow, beginning an annual tradition that continues today. And whereas, at hand is the 20th edition of the CAF's RGV Wing Airshow, and as usual, large crowds, great performances, and good times will be the order of the day. And whereas, we congratulate the RGV Wing of the CAF for providing our sister, for providing our city with this entertainment gem, that along with many other things about our city, helps to keep Brownsville in its rightful place as a leader among South Texas cities. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize the commemorative Air Force for its continuing contribution to the culture of our city and our area, and on the event of its 20th airshow at the Brownsville South Padre Allen International Airport. Done on this, the first day of March 2011. Signed by Mayor Pat Almada and City Commissioners."
Okay, Employee of the Month?
Mayor, members of the commission, please help me welcome the Employee of the Month for March 2011, Allison Bastian from the City Attorney's Office. Allison began working with the City of Brownsville in August of 2007 with the Brownsville Committee Improvement Corporation, the FOB. Yeah, September that year, she was relocated and accepted a position with the Planning Department. And then we found out she was an attorney, so in September of 2009, she was introduced and accepted a position with the, our City Attorney's Office. Since then, she has proven herself to be one of our prime employees. One of the first things we wanted to address was collections, especially weedy lot collections and things like that, that were traditionally assigned to, and handled by contract counsel. And we gave her that task, and she did a tremendous job and, and has, has now kept us up to par in the collections of, of weedy lots and other dues over the city. She has then, she has then moved on to other responsibilities, including working on the plastic bag ordinance, working on ex-territorial jurisdiction issues as a result of other cities, pending issues with our city in relation to that. She has targeted and passed, and helped pass ordinance through the City Commission in relation to payday loans and sexually oriented businesses. Plus, she's also helped us with prosecution in relation to juvenile cases. In these ways, Allison demonstrates the core values of a good employee. She can be counted on to show initiative, excellence, accountability, and is a proven team player. And we honor her with the plaque of the Employee of the Month for March, for her excellence. A watch, she's always on time, she doesn't really need it, but we're gonna give her a watch. And the Employee of the Month pin for March. And of course, she's eligible for the Employee of the Year, which we decide on at our banquet in December. Congratulations, Allison.
Charlie, all this is nice, but is she getting the rings?
No, no collective bargaining on that, but we'll meet with Mark and...
I think Mark should still take her at the lunch.
He did, he's already...
Oh, you didn't?
Good job.
Yes, he has.
You're appreciated value, Allison, I know, I appreciate too. You did a great job.
Thank you. I mean, this is, this is just super nice. I really appreciate it. I'm very grateful. I'm very lucky to work in such a great city with wonderful people. I'm lucky to have Mark as a great mentor and boss, Sessi and Tita keep our office going, and we're really lucky to have them. And this is just extra special, 'cause I've only lived in Brownsville four years, but you know, it feels more like home to me than my other place I lived in ever did. So, that makes this extra sweet, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be an advocate for the city and to do the best I can for it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
For those who don't know, she's an artist. Consent agenda items?
Consent agenda items A through B.
Would approve?
Second. Motion to approve is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six?
Item six, Public Hearing and Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 2011-1539-A to amend Ordinance Number 2011-1539 by adding F penalty to Section 98-14, use of a wireless communication device offense.
Public carries.
Mark, so the, basically here, if you're found guilty, the court charge will be $150?
That's correct, and I'd like to make it clear, I think this item was placed on the agenda by the mayor. I don't have a position, whether or not the fine should be 150 or 500, it's really a policy issue, not a legal issue.
Oh, what?
So, it's something, that's the, 500 dollars, I think, is the maximum fine.
Let me explain, Mark. We passed the ordinance, my intent was to have as a deterrent to save lives, not for us to get rich on it. I didn't realize that the, the fine was gonna be 500 dollars. And that's kinda steep, and it got passed us here, and when I realized it was 500 dollars, you know, I said, you know, that's kinda harsh. So, I asked Allison and Mark to look into amending the ordinance to 150 dollars, which includes the court costs, which I think is 69 dollars, the court costs, something like that. The intent, more than anything else, of this ordinance is to deter people from texting while driving, focus on their driving, so they're not putting themselves or anyone else at risk. So, based on that, my, you know, you all wanna change it, but...
I have a question. Who set the, the set amount? Did you set it, or did staff set the price on the fine?
It was set, I think, by staff, someone.
No, somebody needs to tell us.
There's a, there's a de facto fine, but the city commission can certainly set whatever fine they believe is appropriate. And I think that's very much a policy issue, not a legal issue.
My question is, who deems?
We can do it here.
Do we have that authority?
When he says it's a policy issue, he's saying that you need, we need to make a decision on what the amount's gonna be. If it's at the maximum's 500 dollars, if we set it at a max, the judge, at his discretion, can put it at 150, 100, whatever way of the fine, however he wants to do it. And then it says court costs. Those are separate. Those are normally separate.
Were you aware of that?
Yes.
So, let me ask you something. So, it's safe to keep it at 500 and the judge can dismiss it or give 150? Not necessarily, if we say 150, the judge has no wiggle room to, it's gonna be 150?
That's, that's correct, it's a cap, including court costs.
But since it's a class C misdemeanor, if it's at 500 dollars, the judge can say, you know what, you can't afford it, I'll give you 100, you know, you've done it five times, I'm gonna give you 100.
The municipal judge has the discretion to set whatever fine he's, thinks is appropriate up to 500 dollars.
Now, now, one more question that I have. I know we are always told we need two people to put stuff on agenda. How did this go under your name, and who put it under your name?
I didn't place it on the agenda.
Who put it, does, do we know who?
I asked it to be put, and I asked...
It was put by the mayor, and I believe it was Melissa.
Your name and somebody else who supports what you're doing.
No, I asked...
Well, he asked, he did ask me, and I would've been fine with it, I just felt to tell Estella that I would co-sponsor it.
It was, it was him, but apparently it was Mark with Mark Sossi's name. That was from our office.
I don't, I don't see what the issue would be as to why it's on the agenda, how it got on the agenda. Warrant discussion.
I just want, I just want it to be, I just want us to be a little kinder, I guess, and try to work with you. You know, if somebody from Southmost gets stuck with a 500 dollar fine, that's pretty steep. I like, I like, I like to keep a cap at 150, to where it serves as a deterrent, not, you know, breaking somebody. That's all, I mean, if you all, if you all wanna keep it at 500, you're welcome to do so.
Mayor, we could just say a fine not to exceed 500. The judge can say 100, you can say 50.
That's what it said already.
That's what it says already.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it's normally done in a municipal court setting.
Well, like I said again, and this is my opinion, ladies and gentlemen and colleagues, I think 500 dollars is kinda high.
That's not what it, that's not what...
If you all wanna keep it 500, you're welcome to do so.
But that's not what it says.
That's not what it means.
Well, it gives the judge a discretion to fine up to 500 dollars, so it's a matter of semantics.
You can have a situation where someone gets cited three or four times. The judge needs leeway to say, this is your third time.
You can also have a situation where someone's texting and backs into a, drives into a car.
This is not a federal case, it's not a big deal. Y'all wanna table it, table it.
I'll move to table.
Okay, you have a motion?
Why, why do we table it? Why don't we just say, why don't we just deny it, and we'll go with what we had before?
I'll move to deny.
Okay, make a motion.
He's got guidelines.
You need to close public hearing first.
Let's move to close public hearing. So moved.
Motion to close public hearing, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item. You wanna make your motion to deny, Commissioner Eckerson?
Yeah, I'll make my motion to deny and research it more in the future.
Doesn't...
Okay, we have, we have a motion to deny, can we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor to deny?
Aye.
Aye.
All against, nay.
Nay.
Ladies and gentlemen, nay and nay, okay? Next item?
Item number seven, Public Hearing and Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2011-002 to rezone from light retail X to medium retail G for 1.584 acres for Lot 1, Block 1 of Charmaine Road.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, this is the area shaded in red. It's on Charmaine Road, this is a proposed site for a stripes store. Transiting Commission Board unanimously to approve this recommendation to, to the public hearing.
It's a public hearing?
Would it close public hearing?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action item?
Would approve.
We have a court here. We have a motion, second and a third, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is that a eight?
Item eight, Public Hearing and Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2011-003-S to allow an apartment-specific use in a dwelling Z and light re, light commercial Z for .34 acres of Lot 5 of Medrano Subdivision located near Boca Chica Boulevard on Vermillion Avenue.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, that's the property shaded in red there. Here, they propose to construct six apartment units. Transiting Commission Board unanimously to approve this application to, this is public hearing.
Would it close public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, close public hearing, do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item?
Would approve?
Second.
Approve, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have public comments?
No, we have item nine.
We have number nine.
We have number nine, I'm sorry.
Item nine, Public Hearing and Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2011-601-CU, an ordinance allowing a conditional use permit to sell on-premises alcohol for 1.024 acres for Lot 6, Block H of Brownsville Land Improvement Company Subdivision located at 1260 West Price Road.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, this property shaded in red here, it's on West Price. Here, the applicant would like to have a location to sell wings and, and alcohol. The Transiting Commission Board unanimously to approve this application. The public hearing.
It's a public hearing?
Would it close?
Motion closed, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Would approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10?
Public comment period.
To item 11.
Item 11, Consideration and Action to Adopt Budget Amendment Resolution Number 2011-016 to amend the general fund budget to provide funding for the repairs of an elevator at the Elta Peace Building.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, this is an item that we certainly request that you approve, and that's to repair the elevator at Elta Peace Building.
Would approve?
Thank you, Pete.
Second.
We have, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item 12?
Item 12 and 13 were asked to be tabled.
Item, let me, may I read them?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 12, Consideration and Action to Create the West Morrison Road Public Improvement District, and item 13, Consideration and Action to Appoint Members Directors to the West Morrison Road PID Board of Directors.
Would it table?
Why are we tabling?
At their request. We have a motion to table, and can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 14?
Item 14, Consideration and Action Regarding a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Brownsville, Brownsville Police Department, Brownsville Municipal Court, Brownsville Independent School District Police Department, Resaca de la Palma State Park, Brownsville Department of Parks and Recreation Urban Center, Rio Grande Valley Empowerment Zone Corporation, Brownsville Housing Authority, and the Valley AIDS Council for an Anti-Gang Strategies and Programs Grant.
Carry.
Hi, good evening, Commissioner. I'm simply here today to request permission for City Manager to sign off on our MOU when it is final. The, the application deadline is actually March 11th, and I'm getting all the finer details in place and doing my best to get that submitted before March 11th. So, at this moment, the MOU is not absolutely complete, what you have is a draft, and I am requesting your permission to allow City Manager to sign off on the final draft.
Would approve?
I think this is great, and this brings me to mind if some, we could do something to work together to control and help prevent obesity. One of them is the vending machines in the school district that's offering nothing but junk food.
We don't, they don't have junk food anymore.
They don't?
They don't, or coke. It's all water and watery or...
Really?
Yep.
So, you got healthy foods there?
So, we're on our way.
Good for you.
I haven't been to school in a long time. Well, good. Okay, so we, can we get a motion?
Would approve?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I congratulate you, thank you. Item 16?
Item 15.
15.
Consideration and Action Regarding a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Brownsville, Brownsville Independent School District, and the University of Texas, Texas Southmost College for a Department of State Health Services Community Obesity Prevention Projects Grant.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here to basically ask the same request, if you could allow Mr. Calvillo, City Manager, to sign the final MOU. This would be an agreement between the City of Brownsville, Brownsville Independent School District, School of Public Health, University of Texas at Brownsville. Once all the partners finalize the MOU and agree to move forward, basically it's for a request of up to 300,000 to prevent childhood obesity through nutrition, education, and increased physical activity at the schools.
Move to approve.
Let me ask you, y'all can't control or stop the students leaving campus?
That would basically fall under the jurisdiction of the BISC, I believe.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Real quick, real quick, I just wanna thank what y'all are doing, and Commissioner Galan for all the hard work she's worked with, with these grant writers, to bring some of these grants before the, our agenda. I applaud what you're doing, and you need the recognition.
You guys are great.
Thank you, Commissioner Galan.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 16?
Item 16, Consideration and Action to Award a Contract for the Purchase and Delivery of a Portable Generator for the City of Brownsville.
Good evening, City Commission, Honorable Mayor. Sub recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of a portable generator for the City of Brownsville to Volvo Construction Equipment and Services out of Houston, Texas, in the amount of 93,525. This procurement reflects HEAC contract pricing, that means the Houston Galveston Area Council. Funding is available for this procurement from the 2009 State Homeland Security Program Account Number 01-9111-848-162, in the amount of 85,000 dollars, and the remaining amount of 8,525 is coming from the account number 01418-752. The Administration of the Emergency Management Office concurs with this recommendation.
San, uh, please excuse me, but Santana, is this similar, what we use it in polio storms? Okay, but basically the, the, we're...
It's sitting on a trailer, so we can...
Its main use is gonna be for our pumps? Okay, thank you. Would approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item 17, Consideration and Action to Award a Contract for Repair of the Elevator at the Elta Peace Building.
Sub recommendation is to award a contract for the repairs of the elevator located at Elta Peace Building for the City of Brownsville to Tyson Krupp Elevators of Corpus Christi, Texas, in the amount of 58,388. This is a captive vendor. Tyson Krupp is currently under contract for the maintenance. It just happens that we got a, the last inspection from the state came back saying that we needed to replace the, the main cylinder in the, in this elevator. So, that's the reason why, you know, we're coming with this presentation to get the monies to, to repair this elevator. Funding is available for these procurement or for these, for fixing this elevator under account number 01-610-741. The Administration of the Planning Department concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve?
Case and action item, a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 18?
Item 18, Consideration and Action to Award a Contract for Work Order Numbers 1, 2, and 3 for professional services for the Brownsville Planning Department.
Sub recommendation is to award, to award Work Order Number 1 for Engineering Services and Surveying Services for Four Corners Detention Pond for the City of Brownsville to Ambiotech Engineering in the amount of 193,289. Also, staff recommends the award of Work Order Number 2 for Engineering and Surveying Services for Resaca de la Guerra.